Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council for Monday. My name is Roy Watts, President of Council. I'll have the honor of leading us in the invocation. Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you so much for the souls that are gathered here. Lord, we ask for your blessing at this Easter time. Lord, give us humble hearts to serve you and to serve the residents of this community. Lord, we ask your favor and your protection among all people of our community, especially the employees of the city that work diligently each and every day to serve and protect and to make our community a stronger place today than it was yesterday. Lord, be with us as we make decisions for our community. And Lord, again, we are grateful for all of your blessings. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll this evening?
Mr. Seaver?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Sneak?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Swayzer?
Excuse me, Mr. Swayzer.
It's been moved by Mr. Rozell to excuse Mr. Swayzer and seconded by Mr. Twist.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swayzer, if excuse.
Thank you. This is night. This time we have a presentation from Mayor Oda to present the quarterly winners of the Rumpkey's Look Who's Recycling Award.
So, Rumpkey has started a program where they acknowledge and award a little prize to city residents who take part in recycling. And there's a thing online that people can go on and get their testimony as to why they recycle. So Evan Roma Press live on York Lane and they wrote, they went through the second quarter this year. When asked why they recycle, Mr. Press wrote that his neighbor works at a recycling plant. I think whatever we can do for our Troy residents to help keep them employed is great for them in our city. It also helps keep raw materials available to produce more plastic and paper products that we are using so much of due to COVID-19. Let's help our city. So you all are the winners and here is a goodie bag and a $100 gift card to the parents. So congratulations. Yeah.
Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Grass. Mrs. Knight, would you please read a summary of the minutes of the March 15, 2021 meeting in council?
Minutes of council, March 15, 2021. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended legislation be prepared, accepting pre recommendations of the Enterprise Own Tax and Center Review Council regarding the five enterprise zones and the town park tip that will all be continued. Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing bidding for a farming lease contract for part of Duke Park. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing advertising for bids and a contract for the Marina Building Loading Dock Support Project. Safety and Health Committee recommended legislation be prepared to approve the emergency operations plan update. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing the State Route 41 interconnect project phase two. Resolution number R eight, 2021, contract for the Marina Building Loading Dock Support Project first reading and adopted. Resolution number R nine, 2021, authorizing bids for the State Route 41 Traffic Signal Interconnect Project was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R 10, 2021, accepting recommendations of the Tax and Center Review Council was given first reading and was adopted. Our 11, 2021 also accepted the recommendation of the Tax and Center Review Council regarding the tip was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R 12, 2021, advertise for a farm lease was given first reading and adopted. Ordnance number oh 11, 2021, establish a downtown Troy designated outdoor refreshment area was given second reading and adopted. Ordnance number oh 13, 2021, adopting the emergency operations plan was given first reading and was adopted. Following various comments, council during the 7:34 PM.
Mrs. Knight, House Counsel, wish you'd spend some minutes.
I think so.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. This is nightly. Please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We have a full complement of committee reports tonight. We will begin with the Community Partnerships Committee and Mr. Rozell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This committee met March 22 to consider the recommendation for the Park Board Commissioners. The council permits overnight camping at Troy Community Park and adjacent park areas of the recreational fire pits at Troy Community Park for participants in the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure GOBA and GOBA affiliates for 2021 and 2022. Orders prohibit camping and fire pits within Troy Park, Troy Community Park. Is the recommendation of this committee that notwithstanding legislation be prepared to permit temporary camping at Troy Community Park, adjacent park areas, and to permit recreational fire pits within the Troy Community Park areas by GOBA and GOBA affiliate participants for 2021 and 2022 dates. This is respectfully submitted by Zach Allen, John Swayzer, and myself, William Rozell, as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we will move to the Financial Committee and standing in for Mr. Swayzer tonight is Mr. Seaver.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on March 22 to consider moderate adjustments to the salaries of elected positions. Other than the salary for the position at treasure, which was last increased for 2021, the salaries of elected positions have been unchanged since 2019. It is noted that any adjustment would not be effective during the current terms of office. It is the recommendation of this committee, the legislation be prepared, adjusting the salaries for elected positions as shown below effective at the commencement of the next term for each elected position. We further recommend that the positions of mayor auditor, president counsel, and director of law, as historically been done, continue to be eligible for all healthcare, dental, and life insurance benefits available for all other city employees, subject to the employee contribution. And these are approximately a three, 2.5 and 2% adjustments annually throughout the years. As an example, the council salary would go from 8382 to 86333, 8849, 9026 in 2024. And that's a three, two and a half, 2% salary. The council president, treasurer, mayor, auditor, and law director follow a very similar pattern. That's the report.
Who submitted the report, Mr.?
Oh, respectfully submitted. Mr. Phillips, myself, and Mr. Swayzer.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Are there any comments or questions on the report? Seeing none, we will go to the Personnel Committee and Mr. Twist.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on March 22 to consider a number of personnel related requests. All are discussed in the detailed report and the attached memo. A brief outline of that detailed report, and it is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared regarding, number one, amending the salary ordinance related to the positions at Recreation Department Hobart Arena to abolish the position of facility operator one and establish new positions of facility operator and lead operator. Number two, to amend the salary ordinance for part-time and seasonal employees to create a position of lead food service employee for the Miami Shores Golf Course, Shoreline Restaurant, and add three steps to the hourly rate structure. Number three, amend ordinances to reinstate a longevity benefit for non-bargaining unit employees. And number four, reinstating up to 80 hours of sick leave for hours used from March 2020 through December 31, 2021, only in the case of hours used for a confirmed and documented positive test of an employee personally contracting COVID-19. This is respectfully submitted by Zach Allen, Todd Seaver, and myself as Chair William Twist.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Do any council members have any comments or questions on the report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Recreation and Parks Committee and Mr. Schilling.
This committee met on March 22 to consider use agreements for the June 25 and August 7 concerts at Treasure Island Park that will include the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. Events that include the sale and consumption of alcohol at this venue require specific council action. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute the Treasure Island Park non-ticketed use agreements for the June 25 and August 7, 2021 concerts. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Bobby Phillips, Mr. John Twilliger, and myself, Jeff Schilling, as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we will move on to the Safety and Health Committee and Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on March 22 to consider authorizing amendments to the bylaws of the Miami Valley Risk Management Association, MVRMA. Though MVRMA, Troy, and 20 other municipalities in southwest Ohio are provided a combination of associations, self-insurance and commercial insurance, reinsurance for property casualty exposure and benefits from the other services of the organizations. The Board of Trustees recently recommended some minor adjustments or amendments to the bylaws. It is the recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared approving the proposed MVRMA bylaws and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any related documentations or documents. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself, John Twilliger, as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. Are there any comments or questions on the report from council members? Seeing none, we will move on to the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee also met on March 22 regarding bidding for a sidewalk project to include Phase 13 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program to replace raised, cracked, or otherwise dangerous sidewalks and the placement of sidewalks along undeveloped areas of Pleasant U.S. states. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2021 Sidewalk Repair Program Phase 13, including sidewalks in undeveloped areas of Pleasant U.S. states at a cost not to exceed $325,000. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Sneak, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on the committee report? Seeing none, we will move on to the final report this evening, which is a oral report from the Law and Ordnance Committee and Mr. Seaver.
The city has received notice of a new C1 permit for NS Food Store LLC, EBA, BP Troy, 1590 West Main Street. The C1 permit is for beer only and original sealed container for carryout only. The police department has not recommended an objection or adhering request be filed.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Any comments or questions on the oral report? Moving on, we move on to citizen comments on any of the items on the agenda. We have two resolutions and 15 ordinances for discussion this evening. If you wish to speak on any of those items, you're invited to come up to the lecture. Give your name and address. You have two minutes to address council and Mr. Kirk will be our timekeeper.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Harder. I'm the owner of Hardger Swain Construction, Inc. and the developer of Pleasant U.S. state, the current state. And I'm hearing things through the grapefruit lung regarding the sidewalk, but I have never received any notice regarding the sidewalk. And then I guess what I'm hearing is I'm finally getting movement down there, people interested, developers buying it from me. And if you put sidewalks, I only have one in the undeveloped left. That is going to make the interested parties go away because if you put sidewalks there and then you do construction, it's just going to tear up the sidewalk, which it's going to be a useless point. And I will have to raise the price. I'm already, I'm lowering it to get it moved on. I can understand the city what it does. If I was down there, I would want it done as well. So I've come to the realization that, hey, I slashed my prices. I'm selling the lots for the cost or even under the cost of making them. And if sidewalks are put down, there's only the one remaining lot that I have. I sell two lots in one. It's going to hurt the chance of that being sold. So I just have to reconsider on that because I do have a developer, not only for that property, but for the rest of it on the hook. That's very interesting and coming to me for numbers and things like that. And I, they say because of this, that it's turning them away from it. And that's the last thing I think the city would want done.
Mr. Hardger?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. You have received no notice or any information about this whatsoever?
No, whatsoever.
Where, do you have any idea where we would mail, the city would mail any notices? Because they have come out to the property owners.
Yeah, I'm afraid that, I mean, if you have it at my PO box, I have dropped that. I'm now in Lebanon and I have provided my address to your legal counsel, the city's legal counsel. So, because I did get one notice that was forwarded to me on the street that I took care of. And so I let him know at that time, oh, this is my new address. It came to my other one that was forwarded to me.
Questions, Titterington? Is there a way that we could address this to work something out on timing with?
Sure, just to, just to remind the council, if we cannot serve through certified mail, we're required to put an ad in the newspaper that satisfies the state code. So one way or the other, there was the official notice that was given. We are not interested in putting sidewalks up for the sake of putting sidewalks up. As a matter of fact, we frown on that typically because you don't know where the driveway approach is going to be and want the properties developed rationally and not inefficiently. What I will do is if, Mr. Harder, we may have your contact information, but if you can give me, Sue Knight, your your cellphone, no, your cellphone number or your number.
City council has texted me before.
Well, okay, it's probably been a while, but nonetheless, I'll have, I'll have the city engineer follow up.
And you bring up a good point. The lot that is left, it's a weird shaped lot. So I'm thinking that the house that would be on it would be like an L shape where garages are on one side and enter on the other side. So again, yes, sidewalks and where the approach would go could be depending on what house is actually built there. So.
I don't want to speak for the administration, but we're not in a real hurry to get this done. And timing will work to your advantage, I'm sure. So again, follow through with Mr. Titterington's suggestion and work that out.
I'll definitely get sued. Being in a hurry is a relative.
It wasn't like it's ready to be done tomorrow.
Believe me, I've sent this for the builder that I have on the hook. I'm putting all kinds of incentives to get this done.
Gotcha. Yeah. So just make sure you follow through with that, please.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could just confirm, the legislation that we are approving tonight is just to bid the sidewalk replacement, which would start that process, which would take some time.
Correct. Correct. We can always nonperform that. You know, one way or the other, the sidewalks do need to get in there. They, what I mentioned before was this, this has not been a very speedy subdivision, this last section. It's been probably 15 years or so that it's been undeveloped. And so recently, we've been doing some things to finish it, and this is the, hopefully, the last step. But we will work in concert with builders who want to come in and develop.
See, there are two that I just recently moved. Like I said, just discounting them. So just, you know, move on. Like I said, if I live down there, I would want it done. It's like a work with the city on getting the streets done.
Yeah, just be proactive, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak to any of the items on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into resolutions. Mrs. Knight, would you please read resolution R 13, 2021?
Resolution number R 13, 2021, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Phase 13 of the Sidewalk Repair Program, including the placement of sidewalks along undeveloped properties in Pleasant U.S. states, cross not to exceed $325,000 first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Nighthouse Counsel. Question? Question?
This director, Mr. Titterton, can we? Since we've had our discussion with the builder here, can we split the two and vote? Can we split this resolution to include everything but the Pleasant U.S. states and votes? You know, taking big, possibly giving him a little more time, go to three readings on the, on the Pleasant U.S. state part and go ahead and consider the other sidewalks. Can we split that?
You would have to make them, it would be a procedural issue, but I don't. If you're asking for administrative recommendation, I don't recommend that you do that. You are providing authorization for us to go out to bid that allows us the ability to nonperform whatever sections that we don't and wanting the successful vendor or contractor to do. As I stated, we will follow up between the city engineer, Mr. Harder, and the builders he has involved. You've asked a number of times about other sections of town and why we haven't done sidewalks, and they have been on undeveloped land. And it's exactly the same reason that we've shared with you that we want to coordinate with Mr. Harder. So there's no incentive for us to do this, but doing this tonight gives us the authorization to move forward if, in fact, it becomes necessary. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to and that we're locked into doing something that, just because you've authorized it us to do. We're not going to waste money on sidewalk that may have to be torn up, as I mentioned to Mr. Phillips earlier.
So we're going to trust you on this.
Well, I'm confused, Patrick. I, so, I'm sorry. I should have asked permission. What percentage of this project of the 325 is related to the Pleasant U.S. by presence of U.S. state?
Of the 325,000, it's 25,000 is the estimate.
So, so we're just going to authorize it not to exceed that amount?
Correct.
And then, I mean, if not, then we do it in 25,000 and he pays it.
Correct.
And how long would that process take?
How long with what process? To get, to get construction, it really will.
To go from here to construction. How long does Mr. Harder, Harder, Hardver have to get somebody to do it at a different rate than prevailing wage, which is, or the bid?
Well, I don't know that it's the, the cost part of it. It's the timing. And so that's why I need to get the engineer with Mr. Harder to understand which builders, what their timing is. And if they're going to do that as part of the development of a property that's in our subdivision regs, that sidewalk has to be constructed as part of build out of a lot.
So do you think that can happen in two weeks if we go to a second reading and we have more detail of this?
I, no, I don't because I'm not sure how many lots are involved. There may be multiple builders. We may not be able to get ahold of the builder quickly enough. And if you split this out, then you have to amend tonight to then have it introduced as a separate piece of legislation two weeks from now.
You can always, if we vote on it today and it gets approved, you can always say, we're not going to do it because a builder is going to do it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council, you're still wanting to see how to move on this side?
Move for suspension.
Second. It's been moved to suspend by Mr. Phillips. This is night. Please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to the.
The three reading rule has been waived. It's moved to the resolution by Mr. Phillips, sent by Mr. Mrs. Sneak, excuse me. This is nightly for all.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. So we appreciate your comments. If you wish to address council, there will be time at the end of the week.
Oh, okay.
Mrs. Knight, would you please read resolution R 14?
Resolution number R 14, 2021, a resolution approving amendments to the agreement and bylaws of the Miami Valley Risk Management Association. This is just the routine amendments to the bylaws first reading.
To suspend, second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twilliger. I'm sorry, Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Backwards. By Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. I seconded. Okay. Mr. Twilliger made the motion.
Approved by Twilliger, seconded by Schilling. Yes.
They all start to sound the same after a while. That's all I can say.
It's on first.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution, the three reading rule been waived. Motion made by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We move into ordinances. Mrs. Knight, would you please read orders oh 14, 2021?
Ordnance number oh 14, 2021, ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to execute a Treasure Island non-ticketed use agreement for 2021 events at Treasure Island Park. This is concerning the concerts of June 25 and August 7, first reading.
Let's go to the session now.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Seaver. This is Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Second. The three rules been suspended, it's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. This is Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O fifteen twenty twenty one?
Ordinance number O fifteen twenty twenty-one. Ordinance authorizing the use of Troy Community Park and adjacent park areas for the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure Goba and Affiliates event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the codified ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, for specific dates and calendar years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. For twenty twenty-one is June twenty-three to twenty-five, and twenty twenty-two, June twenty-two to twenty-four. These are the, these dates have been recommended by the Recreation Board and the Park Board, first reading.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Roselle, seconded by Mrs. Sneak. This is Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Three rules been suspended, House Counsel, wish that.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Allen, seconded by Mr. Twist. This is Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yeah.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O sixteen twenty twenty one?
Ordinance number O sixteen twenty twenty-one. Ordinance establishing salaries for certain elected officials. This has to do with the salaries of the mayor, the auditor, the director of law, members of council, president of council, and treasurer, with any increases commencing at the new terms, first reading.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Sneak. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The three rule has been suspended. House Counsel, wish that.
Move to the.
Second. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. This is Knight, please call the roll.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O seventeen twenty twenty?
Ordinance number O seventeen twenty twenty-one. Ordinance amending ordinance number O fifty-three twenty twenty, establishing salaries of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio. This amends the salary ordinance related to part-time positions to establish the new position of lead food service employee at the Shoreline Restaurant, first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight, House Counsel, wish that.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three rule by Mr. Roselle, seconded by Mr. Twist. This is Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes.
Move to the. Second.
The three rules been suspended, it's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O eighteen twenty twenty one?
Ordinance number O eighteen twenty twenty-one. Ordinance amending ordinance number O fifty-one twenty eighteen and ordinance number O forty-seven twenty twenty, fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio. This is related to the Recreation Board's Boulevard Arena and the facility operator position as reported on, first reading.
This is Knight, House Counsel, wish that.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes. Second.
The three year rule has been suspended, it's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Sneak. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O nineteen twenty twenty one?
Ordinance number O nineteen twenty twenty-one. Ordinance amending ordinances to provide a longevity benefit. This reinstates longevity benefits for non-bargaining unit positions. This is the first reading.
House Counsel, wish that.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three rule by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Schilling?
No.
No, Mr. Roselle? No, Mr. Allen? Mr. Twist?
I have another question.
You have a question? Mr. Schilling?
And this is Director, Mr. Patrick, the question I had when we talked about this in committee, and I guess I should have brought it up then, but in in providing the legislative provision for non-bargaining union employees, there were some discussion or some comment that our our union employees have the possibility of earning more money for a job that maybe also be by the non-union. In other words, if the non-union employees would be making less than the union employees doing the same work. And my question is, do we ever get into a, are we approaching a problem where we? If this is truly happening, equal pay for equal work type of a situation?
Uh, it's not because the basis, now, we're talking about similar positions that have similar hourly rates. The hourly rates are the same. What's different is the seniority provision, which is that longevity and the fact that some get it and some don't. So it's not a matter of equal pay for equal work. It's just an additional benefit, and that's why this would correct that.
Okay. So, in other words, it's not like we've got this job, and if you're union, you get this. And if you're non-union, you get this wage. Shouldn't it be one wage for that particular job no matter what?
No, it's not, it's not a difference between, it's not a difference in the base rates. It's the percentage for seniority that is applied under the union's situation and not the non-union. Okay, so it's not, it doesn't, it's not related to the base rate of pay.
Nice. Jeff, I think they confused this in the committee. Thank you, Mr. Titterton. We do have a motion that's been made, a proper second on the floor. This is Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Three rule has been suspended.
Been taken down.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O twenty twenty one?
Ordinance number O twenty twenty-one. Ordinance reinstating sick leave hours to city employed employees who contracted COVID-nineteen. This would reinstate up to eighty hours of sick leave for set employees, first reading.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, and seconded by Mrs. Sneak. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The three rule has been suspended, it's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
This is Sneak, yes. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Roselle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O twenty-one, twenty twenty-one?
Ordinance number O twenty-one twenty twenty-one. An ordinance changing the zoning of annex parcels on Riverside Drive, Troy, Ohio, from city-administered county zoning to the city zoning of our four single-family residential district. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. There will be a public hearing at the April nineteenth meeting of council.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Consideration that there will be a future public hearing, this will stand as the first reading. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O twenty-two twenty twenty?
Ordinance number O twenty-two twenty twenty-one. An ordinance changing the zoning of annex parcel number D O eight one O six eight nine six, in lot one one three five seven, from city-administered county zoning of A two general agricultural district to the city zoning of our five single-family residential district. This parcel is located off of Lidle Road, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. We'll have a public hearing on April nineteenth.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Again, in consideration of the future public hearing, this will stand as the first reading. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O twenty-three twenty?
Ordinance number O twenty-three twenty twenty-one. An ordinance changing the zoning of annex parcel number D O eight one O six eight nine eight, in lot one one three six four, from city-administered county zoning of A two general agricultural district to the city zoning of our four single-family residential district. This is located eleven oh three Washington Road, recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, public hearing on April nineteenth.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Again, in consideration of the future public hearing, we hold on this item, this will stand as the first reading. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the ordinance O twenty-four twenty twenty one?
Ordinance number O twenty-four twenty twenty-one. An ordinance changing the zoning of annex parcel number D O eight one O six six five oh, in lot one oh eight nine nine, from city-administered county zoning of R one triple A, one family residential district, to the city zoning of R three B, single-family residential district. This is located at twenty-nine hundred McKay Road, recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, with a public hearing on April nineteenth.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Again, in consideration of the future public hearing, we hold on this item, this will stand as the first reading. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O twenty-five twenty twenty one?
Ordinance number O twenty-five twenty twenty-one. An ordinance changing the zoning of annex parcel number D O eight one O six nine oh four, in lot one one three six five, and annex parcel number D O eight one O six nine oh six, in lot one one three six six, of city-administered county zoning of R one triple A, one county residential district to the city zoning of our four single-family residential district. These two parcels are located at twenty-seven sixty-five McKay Road. Troy Planning Commission has recommended approval. There will be a public hearing on April nineteenth.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Again, in consideration of the future public hearing held on this item, this will stand as the first reading. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O twenty-six twenty twenty one?
Ordinance number O twenty-six twenty twenty-one. An ordinance changing the zoning of annex parcel number D O eight two five oh seven three five, in lot one one three six seven, from city-administered county zoning of A two general agricultural district to the city zoning of our four single-family residential district. This is located at twenty-eight eleven South State Route seven eighteen. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, and we'll have a public hearing on April nineteenth.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Again, in consideration of the future public hearing held on this item, this will stand as the first reading. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O twenty-seven twenty twenty one?
Ordinance number O twenty-seven twenty twenty-one. An ordinance changing the zoning of annex parcel number K three oh oh four two four oh oh, from K three oh oh four two four oh seven, from city-administered county zoning of A two general agricultural district to the city zoning of our three B, single-family residential district. This property is located off Troy Urbana Road, has been recommended for rezoning by the Troy Planning Commission, and we'll have a public hearing on April nineteenth.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. And we have arrived at the final ordinance of the evening, Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O twenty-eight twenty twenty?
Ordinance number O twenty-eight twenty twenty-one. An ordinance changing the zoning of annex parcel number K three one two five oh oh one oh, from city-administered county zoning to the city zoning of W, oh, Wellhead Operation District. This property is located at five five four Stockton Road. It is owned by the city of Troy, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, and we'll have a public hearing on April nineteenth.
Again, in consideration of the future public hearing, this will stand as the first reading. Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to comments of elected officials, Mayor Odom.
Do not have anything tonight, but thank you.
Thank you, Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tippett.
Sure, just to highlight a couple of things in your items of interest, uh, tomorrow at ten thirty, you have the groundbreaking for the Fire Station One project, and that's at ten thirty, and that's over at one ten East Canal Street. Uh, the public is invited. Spring cleanup is April twelfth through, uh, the seventeenth. That starts next Monday, uh, where we relax the standards for trash pickup, you know, airbags and brush and alike, out for that week so that we can courage, uh, spring cleanup. I've said there, and the, uh, the city has extended the twenty twenty filing, tax filing deadline to May seventeenth to comply and coincide with both the state of Ohio and the, uh, IRS. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Director of Law, Mr. Curber.
I have nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curber. City Auditor, Mr. Friggin.
Thank you, Mr. Friggin. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Friggin. Do any council members have any comments this evening that they'd like to add?
I have one greeting, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Seaver.
Um, I've read the mayor's comments today in the Daily News, and I think everyone probably in this room was disappointed by the decision of the Strawberry Festival. I cannot go forward. Um, I guess the question I have is, at least in the, uh, newspaper reported that there were some, uh, economic concerns. So I guess the question is that they reached out to the city, uh, and would the city be in a position that we could help them? Uh, and I guess assuming that it's not going to happen, uh, this is kind of a two-part question. Could we look at, uh, either making the Fourth of July or, or having more events downtown? I'm just really concerned about the viability of this downtown, uh, with a lot of the things that are, are happening, is, uh, the struggles that they have had because of this pandemic. So I guess it's really a two-part question to the city.
I'll say multiple parts because I think it's more than two, but, uh, so we did have, uh, staff did have discussions with, uh, the, uh, Strawberry Festival Director, if you will. Uh, numerous occasions, we did offer our support and continued to offer our support. Uh, most recently, uh, last Monday, um, we're not aware that, we were not aware, like, most, uh, that the Health District did provide guidance as late as, uh, last Thursday. Uh, in reading over those, uh, provisions, uh, I think that we could have made some accommodations uh, and offered some support. We did agree, uh, and offer on Monday, for example, that, you know, knowing this was a priority, knowing that, uh, time was short, knowing that there were some logistics that particularly the city had to work out, uh, that we would make that a priority. Uh, so I agree, we were, we were also disappointed, uh, at the decision. Today, I know the, uh, the governor, uh, relaxed his guidelines, uh, related to restrictions, related to outdoor events, uh, whether or not they may influence a final, final, final decision or not. Uh, at least we have some better guidance going forward with other events. Uh, July fourth has traditionally and is being organized around Treasure Island. I'm not sure.
We, we have trucks there, right?
I'm sorry?
We have food trucks and things like that.
We have a concert there. Of course, we've got the viewing of the fireworks as well. Um, so whether we can expand that all the way out into the downtown may be a challenge. Um, we have other events that, uh, we have scheduled. Um, we, uh, throughout the, uh, the summer, uh, and, uh, we can certainly look, uh, talk to Troy Main Street, which has been a very, uh, cooperative partner, uh, with us on, uh, on downtown events that they have been putting on. And perhaps we can look at ways to expand those and, uh, and increase the, the offerings, if you will, uh, to compensate for, uh, the, uh, the lack of the festival for the second year.
But to go along with that question, have we reached out to maybe allow some nonprofits that normally have a large fundraiser maybe to work with Troy Main Street to come down on a Saturday, or I guess thinking along those lines, like, trying to help some of these nonprofits? I think of a band, they sell a billion strawberry donuts, maybe they still will, but is there different times, maybe reduce? This vendor will be here on this Saturday to help some of those nonprofits? Have we thought about that, or is that more?
So I can say that, uh, every, just about every week, if not every week, there is a, uh, a, a food vendor that is part of the farmer's market. Um, the, the challenge, um, and I'll speak for Rotary, I know, uh, Mr. Phillips, you can probably speak for Kiwanis and, and several other, uh, nonprofits, including the donuts. That is not a pop-up activity. Um, that is something that you plan for a bit in advance. It's a, a, a big effort, uh, with, uh, order, pre-ordering, uh, scheduling volunteers, uh, setting up the, the, the truck or the tent or whatever you're using, uh, when it comes to the Strawberry Festival because you're there for two, two and a half days. So it's not quite the same thing, but we, we have been looking at some ways that we would involve more, uh, food trucks without, uh, invading the brick and mortar, small businesses and, and restaurants and the, and the food offerings that we have, uh, in the downtown, uh, because we are very concerned that, uh, with the past year and the way it's impacted, uh, the downtown, if we don't find ways to bring people back downtown, through activities, uh, through some of the initiatives that the council has passed, that, uh, it's going to be a real challenge to come out of twenty twenty one.
Well, the door will bring millions, so.
I'm, I'm not going to say millions.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thank you. Just to reiterate, uh, for picking back on that, I know that, uh, for Kiwanis, uh, our programs have been greatly impacted. And this is kind of a gut punch, uh, at the last minute by the, uh, the Strawberry Board, so, whatever we can do to, to assist all of the nonprofits in town that, that use this as their major fundraiser that affects a boatload of kids in our community. And this, this is just, it really, it really, uh, hurts. And I, I know that there was a lot of thought given into this, but I just disagree with their decision. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other council members with any comments or questions to see? Seeing none, any staff members in the audience have any comments or questions to see? We will now open up to comments from the general public. If you wish to address council, please come up to the lecture and give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consult.
All right, Steve Anderson, last of the five, Jefferson Drive. I think we're beating here, as I recall, because COVID, we spread out. You know, I see a door for coming interests. It's mask required to enter. Now, apparently, some folks either don't read English or whatever, but some people are running out. So I don't care if they get COVID, but I'm at the age where if I get it, I may die. Or somebody may stick something down my throat. But I think it's arrogant, to say the least, that folks can, can come in here without a mask, mingle around everybody else, and act like a leader, which I think is embarrassing and arrogant, to say the least. So I don't know if you can do something as a council to say, if you're gonna be serious about this, be serious about it. I understand it's a bunch of controversy, as you just mentioned about COVID and, and the Strawberry Festival. I understand that there's no good answer either way. And there's no gray space, which is really frustrating for a group of politicians, okay? So see the flag, boy, if you have it, they're not gonna have it.